Would like to call the January, or nope, wrong month. February 12th, 2024, a school board meeting to order. Lisa, could you please call the roll?
Director Weber?
Here.
W Felton?
Here.
Claflin?
Here.
Lala Burdi?
Here.
T Felton?
Here.
Human?
Here.
Raj?
Mostly here. All right, if we could, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as our committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pos. Objections, motion carries. And tonight, we get to kick off quality of action. Dr. Candace Burkhardt, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you to talk about some mental health things in relation to our schools. Looks like you have a guest tonight as well.
I do, I have a guest. Let's see, can you hear me if I'm here, or do I need to go?
Yeah, I can hear you.
You're okay? Okay, perfect. All right. Couple alerts that are popping up here, I'm just gonna click out. All right, there we go. Okay. Apologies for the technology there.
Hey, hey, it's working, we can see your slideshow, we're in good place.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you for having us, it's an honor to be able to present to you Chair Ash, Superintendent Zambrino, and members of the board. So I'm Candace, Dr. Candace Burkhardt, the Director of Student Services for South St. Paul, and I'm joined by a special guest, Mr. Joel Sunstrom from the University of Minnesota, who's in the School Psychology Program there. We have really been honored to have received a federal, a five-year federal grant here in South St. Paul. So Mr. Sunstrom is gonna talk about that grant today and our partnership with the University of Minnesota, and then I'm going to share as well about just some of the great work that our student mental health, student support team is doing to support the mental health needs in all of our schools. So I will turn it over to my partner here from the University of Minnesota.
Thank you. Hi. Well, this week is the National Association of School Psychologists Week, and their NASP meeting down in New Orleans. So most of all of U of M staff or within the School of Psychology Department is there, so you're stuck with me. So we'll see, I'm just a first year at University of Minnesota in the School Psychology Program. There's two tracks, specialist, which is essentially a master's degree, and then of course, the PhD track. And I'm just on the specialist for now, but I'm leaving the PhD open. Not that you care, but. So I'll be introducing the grant that was provided to University of Minnesota. It's called, well, there's actually two grants, but I'll be discussing the one that's relevant to South St. Paul. It's called Project Aware, funded by the US Department of Education Mental Health Services, Professional Demonstration Grant Program. The aims of this grant are to build capacity by addressing school psychologist shortages and develop and implement systems that are better equipped to support student mental health through multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. That's center equity. First of all, what's in the aim? SEL, SEB, behavioral health, well-being, behavioral support. All these are kind of saying the same thing. And I know education is first and foremost about academics, but we believe, or I don't know if I can speak for everybody, or anybody, but I believe that all of these are academic enablers. So they all point to a student's success in school. So all these terms are essentially pointing to the same thing. The project goals are to increase the number of and diversity of fully qualified school psychologists in Minnesota, increase the capacity of high-need local educational agencies to support student mental health through multi-tiered systems of support, increase the number of skilled supervisors, and improve student outcomes. So my supervisor is Dr. Molly Weeks, and she works in South St. Paul with the high school and middle school. And the project director at the U is Dr. Faith Miller. And of course, we already know who is our partner in South St. Paul, Dr. Candace. So I just wanted to mention those names. So what does the project mean for South St. Paul? It is the opportunity to reimagine services and support in your building to better address the current mental health crisis. It is to bolster mental health services and supports, assistance with comprehensive evaluations, reach more students with consistency, for example, interventions or progress monitoring, and to access to current research and best practices. But how? Project Aware is employing 16 paid graduate assistants. Not all of the 16 are at South St. Paul, they're actually at other schools in Minneapolis and regular St. Paul. Do you say regular St. Paul around here? It is a five-year grant, provides, and each of these graduate assistants either provides 10 or 20 hours per week of mental health services with a range of supports, backed by the U, of course, and services to bolster capacity for equitable, inclusive services and create culturally and linguistically inclusive, I'm gonna keep going, and identify, and identity-safe environments for students, long sentence. Our team, actually, this is the team in the middle school. So Molly Weeks is the supervisor from the U, but actually, well, all these are from the U. The current intern at the middle school is Dan. And then we have a range of third year, fourth year, another third year, a second year, and a first year, all working within the middle school from the U of M. And then I work in the high school, also the same supervisor, Molly Weeks. The intern there is Laura. And we have a sixth year, a second year, a second year, and three first years, including myself, all working at the high school. And we share one office, so we interact and with each other, yeah. The timeline of the project, back in September, October, was a needs assessment and resource mapping. We looked at all the mental health resources that are within the school, but also within the community of South St. Paul. November, January, we are, we have constructed a blueprint and an action plan, and now we are starting to implement that plan going forward. I'm sure there's gonna be lots of, it's maybe cyclical, this system, but that's where we're at. So. The project efforts so far, so these are just some of the measures that we just recently took because according to the grant, we have to measure what we are doing in the school, and part of measuring that is how many students we have reached. So we have supported teachers in screening over 1,000 students. We have also done follow-up interviews with 23 of those students, based on those screenings. We have supported evaluations for students, about 47. Push-in supports for a couple of classes, 35 to 45 students. There is a reset or regulation room in the middle school, and we have serviced 13 students within that room. We are providing, or have provided, six interventions so far, some of those are ongoing. And we have attended, students have attended tier-two consultation meetings and community connect meetings. And we have also provided some professional development for almost 60 parents and teachers. So a day in the life, this is actually just my calendar from Friday, so just to see what, you know, I do. I go to South St. Paul two days a week, Tuesdays and Fridays, and I have a full day there. Some of this, I just kind of, it's not exactly what I did, but I try to give a broad example of what I might be doing. I go to a meeting in the morning, then I have group supervision with my supervisor, then it's prep time for an observation, I'll go do a classroom observation and write it up, prep for an intervention. I help with, actually, I'm helping with a senior member, a student, a second-year student, for a couple interventions, I get a lunch in there. I do some writings by doing some reviews of records, and then prep and another intervention by the end of the day. And also, a bit of time in the reset room. So why school psychologists? Why was this grant geared towards school psychologists and not towards maybe other professions? Well, school psychologists serve a unique role in supporting youth mental health. School psychologists apply psychological science to mental health, learning, and behavior in schools to foster supportive learning environments across the spectrum of individual differences and needs through direct intervention and assessment services, individual and system consultation, collaboration, and research. School psychologists receive specialized training in delivering evidence-based mental health services to students directly in collaboration across school, family, and community settings to support practices more broadly. Those are both taken from the National Association of School Psychologists, which is, they're having their annual meeting this week. And that's all from me.
Great. Well, in addition to our school psychologists, we have a full continuum of different school-based mental health providers that we're able to offer. So we have six different school counselors, we have one at each elementary, and then two at the middle school and two at the high school. We have one school social worker for every building. As Joel mentioned, we have 14 different school psychologists interns, U of M faculty members, and graduate assistants serving at our schools. We have two community 360 workers, so one serves both elementary buildings, and then another one serves our secondary building. And those really support us with those community connections, so they're partially funded through Dakota County in our LCTS funding that we share as Dakota County districts. And they have access to different funding streams, so for example, they have grant access for students or for families experiencing homelessness, so they can get families different vouchers to rent apartments and things like that. So they have kind of a unique position that they're able to offer. And then we have three associated clinic of psychology therapists. So those are co-located licensed mental health therapists that work with both students and their families. And then also provide that connection to ongoing therapy supports as well. So they will work with a student, and then if a student needs longer-term care, they will help make that connection and transfer them to a full provider. So all in all, we have about 27 staff working in a range of capacities across our buildings, which is really exciting. I mean, it's about a 1 to 100 ratio when you think about it with our school enrollment. Like, the gold standard nationally is about 1 to 250. So we are, you know, well and above that. I think it just really speaks volumes to the seriousness that we take this in our school district and the efforts that we've put in to ensure that we're supporting students with their, their mental health, social-emotional learning, SEB, all the different acronyms there. But we know that those all really lead to academic outcomes when our students feel safe and feel valued as members of the community. Just wanna share another kind of example of what, how this all fits together, because it's not just mental health service, it's really about that whole school, community, and child. So this is a visual from the University of Connecticut. And as Joel talked about, that MTSS, this is an MTSS example in action. So that green is those universal strategies that we provide all students. So things like making sure we have a safe environment, engaging academic curriculum, healthy school nutrition, physical activity, all the family-school collaboration efforts we put in, all of those pieces. And it shows on the left side the school examples, and on the right side, those community examples. And I love when I look at those community examples, because I just see our community education programs, and I see all the ways that we partner with the city of South St. Paul and Dakota County to really bridge those things together for those universal preventions and practices. Then that next layer, that yellow layer, are targeted supports that some students may need. So could be those learning supports accommodations, maybe those basic need services. For example, it might be, like I mentioned, our collaborative workers really supporting a family with housing or food resources, the food backpack program that we do each week. I kind of chuckle because on here, family support such as birth-to-three programs is in the community example, but in Minnesota, that's actually a school district function. So in some states, it could be a community organization, but here in Minnesota, it's our, our school district. And then that red section are those select practices for, for just a few students. So it's that kind of tier-three, for just maybe individual supports or small group supports. And really, you know, a student with a disability could live in any of these supports. I like to think of it as going to the dentist. So if I go to the dentist, all of us need a basic cleaning for our teeth, right? I also might need a filling, that might be that yellow level. And maybe I need a root canal, that's that kind of red level. So we, you could kind of range throughout that. That could be for an English-language learner student, it could be for a student with a disability. It could be for, you know, just a student that's having a bad day and needs to access that tier-three support for a couple of weeks to then go back down to that lower tier. So we really try to look at that holistic child and try to bridge those approaches. And it's really been an honor to get to work in South St. Paul, because that's, that's the partnership I see heading in all of our different departments in this district, especially with our Educational Services Department and being able to really connect that academic piece to that social-emotional learning piece for our students. Here's just some other examples of what this has looked like this year here in South St. Paul. So that guiding principles are really just that layer that we know all of our staff need, all of our families need. We've done training with all of our, our staff, our administrators around this work, our U of M partnership, we were able to do some training for our Special Education Advisory Council and offer that to parents on how to work with your student if they're having a tantrum or a meltdown, and offer some proactive strategies. And then that tier-one layer, these are, again, are all of those things that every student in our district has access to. And then that tier-three, that group intervention and screening. So as Joel mentioned, we have introduced social-emotional behavior screening this year across second grade through 12 to really try to catch students who may need some extra supports around school-based mental health or social-emotional learning. And then have really looked at that data, done some specific interviews with students that we have more questions about or potentially need more needs. And then that tier-three is, again, that individual mental health counseling, maybe intervention, maybe doing some functional behavior assessment, behavior support plans, or even potentially crisis response, so maybe needing to do a threat assessment or a suicide risk screener or something of that nature. So it's, it's a robust team. It's really exciting to see all of the services that we're able to offer, and I just can't wait to see where, where the future goes with this. So thank you, and we're here for any questions that you may have.
Excellent.
I have a question regarding liability, especially when working with minors. I see, you know, I see that you have licensed therapists, but you also are working with college students. What protections are in place for minors?
Yeah, it's.
They get a bad, if there's a bad situation?
Sure, it's, it's related to that faculty supervision. So Dr. Molly Weeks is that faculty supervisor, she's supervising all of the work being done with students. And she's a licensed school psychologist and has a PhD and serves at the University of Minnesota. And then all of the, the staff that work with us are background-checked and go through that process as well.
It just makes me a little nervous. Just because someone's a psychology student doesn't necessarily mean that they've dealt with their own issues. And I get worried for kids being vulnerable.
Yeah, none of the work being done by our graduate assistants is like individual therapy. It's all group intervention, and they're using evidence-based intervention curricula. So, for example, one of the, the things I saw on your schedule was that HOPS program, which is a homework program, so it's all about, you know, some of the homework skills you need to be successful. So that, those are the types of really more education-focused types of.
Not necessarily doing individual therapy with them.
No, we're not doing individual therapy.
Okay, thank you.
I also think this is such an important priority, and, you know, it doesn't take any sort of skilled technician to sort of see in the news that students' sort of social-emotional needs are at a heightened state right now, but it's always spoken in pretty vague terms. So what are some of the trends of some of the things that we're seeing? Like, a lot of students needing some assistance, sort of navigating?
Yeah, do, do you want to share it all, what you're seeing coming up?
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but like, I think for our community also, knowing some specifics about what students are navigating right now would be helpful.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that if you wanna, wanna think as well. But I think one of the things that's unique post-pandemic, and we started to see this a little bit pre-pandemic, was around chronic absenteeism. And so some of the anxiety around going to school, and then just, you know, some of those psychosomatic kind of worries about school, and how do I process that, or even like, I can't imagine being a teenager right now with all the social media. And so, you know, of course, that's bringing up things for, for students and how you navigate that.
Yeah, true. It's a very different dynamic.
Yeah. Anything else you would add there?
I think that's the major.
Yeah. And then a lot of, you know, childhood trauma that we see as well with our, our students, and those adverse childhood experiences of, yeah. You know, I mentioned housing insecurity, food insecurity, you know, those, those types of struggles that our families are experiencing, or having a parent that's incarcerated or caregiver that you don't get to see every day.
You mentioned screening. Give me an example of like, what, how do you screen these children, how is that done? And is it done to everybody?
Yeah, so we use FastBridge, which is really that, it's actually was created at the University of Minnesota, but it's really the national best practice for screening. So it's, the tool is called SABERS, which stands for Social Academic Emotional Behavior Risk Screener. And so. So it's a quiz that the, or the kind of a survey that the students take on themselves. And then from there, if we see any information from there, we then have follow-up conversations with those students to just see, like, was a student, you know, maybe playing around and put some things, or are there some actual concerns? We'll also look and triangulate that data with, you know, office discipline referrals, maybe attendance reports, their grades, yeah, those just types of things to get a picture of students.
If you have follow-up with them, are you notifying parents?
We are, yes. So any student that's part of an intervention, we do notify parents and get their consent for that.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate the focus that we have on this for our students in our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we move to the report sections of our meeting. At our first board meeting of the month, we have a public listening session here at City Hall at 4:15. We did have one individual in attendance, but did not have comments to provide to the board tonight. But next, I will turn over to Vice Chair Erin Claflin for updates from our Committee of the Whole meeting.
Thank you, Chair Ash. We accomplished quite a bit during the Committee of the Whole tonight. First, we heard from Leslie Gamaz and Courtney Renville-Soto, who are representing the American Indian Parent Advisory Council. That is a group of parents who will be coming to the board next meeting in two weeks to report on our service, providing a good education to our American Indian students. And they gave us some of the information that they've shared with those parents on student progress, achievements, and what the school district is trying to do to be very responsible for where we are and transparent with the commitments and actions that they are taking to improve those academic conditions for those students, make sure that everyone has those opportunities to achieve. And we discussed our meeting structure. And we are evaluating how we are spending our time best to serve the board, serve the community, serve our schools, serve our students. And through many discussions, we've decided we need more time as a board to discuss information that's in front of us and process that before we come to a meeting to vote. So we have gone over many different versions of schedules. And next meeting, the fourth Monday of February, we're going to bring forward a proposal to change our calendar, where on the second Monday of the month, we would have a longer work session for the board. We would have the opportunity for members of the public to come and talk to the whole board. And then there would not be a business meeting, the televised session of us sitting here at the tall table. So that would be more of a work session where we can dive into details, discuss things among ourselves, and then take that information back out to the community and talk to other folks, think about it, talk amongst ourselves as well. Then the fourth Monday of the month, we would have a shorter work session where we could review any of the other committee meetings that have happened over the month, recap what we are going to go over at the business meeting, bring back any comments that we've heard from the folks, and then have this public business meeting. Both of those Mondays would be public, open to the public to attend. The only one that would be televised would be that second part of that fourth Monday. There's a lot of first Monday and second Monday. And another part of this whole setting a calendar to be predictable, we want to have our committee meetings pre-scheduled, then we're not trying to organize, are you available on which day? And we just know what days we would be meeting. For finance committee, always have a regular schedule. That will help us do the business of the board. And we'll have a few other changes that we'll propose to our committee assignments and maybe a few other pieces that'll continue to fall into place. But at the next meeting in two weeks, we will have that full proposal and how we are going to revise our schedule going forward. And we want this to serve the board, we want this to serve the public, we want this to serve the community. So do let us know if there are concerns, if you have comments. We do take public comments, and you can always reach out to the board, either any of us individually, or submit comments online, email. There are many ways to reach us. Because we have so much done, we've also got the student board reps. We've had the pleasure of having Renata Awadala and Luis Torres. As, as student representatives this year. So they have helped bring the voice of our students in the senior high to the board, help connect the work that we are doing here to how that impacts students and really get their perspective on how our decisions are impacting their daily lives. And we have a few suggestions for how to improve this for next year. We will shortly be, they were great suggestions, I think this is gonna be even better for the next students that join us. But we will be opening up applications for board reps for the next year. And I really encourage students to apply. There's a lot that you can learn about how your school is run, the decisions that are made behind the scenes that impact, what classes are available to you, what your schedule is like, why, why we talk so much about budgets? And if you are at all interested in this, please apply. Look for those flyers about application to the board. I think that wrapped up all the stuff we discussed, it was busy.
Yeah, we had that extra week, we had a lot to make up for in that time. Next, I will turn it over to Dr. Zambrina for some highlights and updates from around the district.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Ash. Hopefully, everyone is enjoying our extended fall. I don't know what season we're in right now, we did have. We did have that one week in there that let us know it was winter, but sure has been nice, other than those backyard skating rinks that I see just kind of laying flat and empty around the neighborhoods. But yeah, and you know, I do want to just give a shout out to Dr. Burkhart for the work she's been doing. I know I heard a snapshot of it. There was a lot under that and she's just a little bit over six months into her time with us and we were so appreciative to get the taxpayer dollars to be able to build out that support model. And then we hired Candace and said, here, make it all go. And so she's been doing a fantastic job with that. I know they prioritize really role clarity within the different roles because with social workers being new in our schools and how does that look compared to other things? And then she mentioned the risk assessments and threat assessments. So that was a high priority area. So just appreciate what the work she's doing in the partnership with the U. So really feels good to know we have that much support going on. But lots going on around the district as well. And this is probably, you know, people are like, really? But let's hold the date, right? We want to make sure people mark their calendars because I know it's that time of year you start thinking about trips and vacations and want to make sure everyone's aware of what summer learning opportunities are available. A great one kindergarten or K Camp, as some people call that. It's a short four-day, eight thirty to eleven in the morning, but we had about half of our kindergarten families participate last year. So I want to make sure everyone's aware that that's available. And then we will have the elementary summer, let me back up. That would be at the site you'll go to. So if your child's going to go to Lincoln Summer, the K Camp will be there for the summer. So just depending on if you're going to Lincoln or Capoja, that's where you'll go for K Camp. And then Elementary Summer Learning Academy will be for grades one to five, Monday to Thursday, the seventeenth of June through the twenty-fifth of July. And then we always look at those transition periods. We talked about K Camp, Packer Preview is another great opportunity for incoming sixth graders to get a taste of middle school. So just like our kinders will come in and learn what that feels like, we want to make sure our transition to the secondary goes well as well. So within there, you don't see high school. There's credit recovery always going on for high school. So when you look at where's high school, that's kind of what's happening for the high school. This month, February, is Black History Month, and we're really excited to celebrate this month. We often talk about, you know, if we have a day to recognize something, that's never enough. A month may not be enough either, but we're proud to dig in and really celebrate Black History Month. Our African-American students are our third largest demographic in the district and they make fantastic contributions every day. But we want to make sure to call out all the accomplishments and that all African-Americans have made and really help build that sense of pride among our students and empower them to see themselves as great contributors in our school. And as the slide shows, we have some great contributions happening across the district. So we have displays at all the schools highlighting, you know, key accomplishments of black leaders and our high school BPO. We have an amazing leadership group in BPO, and I see a head nod across from me over here with Renata, who's one of those fantastic BPO members. But they're getting to the elementary schools and doing a number of different things hosted throughout the month. So again, no group is ever something you could celebrate enough in one month. But we're excited to elevate African-American heritage in South St. Paul. This month is also I Love to Read Month. And so being a learning organization, what's more fun than celebrating reading, right? And I love this picture, how we just make reading fun. And so schools have had celebrations like dressed like a book character day. So I can see we got the Hulk. I'm trying to make out who the who the rest of those are, but I see, I love the teacher with the give a mouse a cookie, really going all in there. So really fun. They're doing book recommendation walls or design a bookmark contest, reading trains, so lots of activities. I've been invited to read in some of the classrooms and that is just a bucket filler. The board sees a lot of my Friday updates, but I'm telling you, like, our kids are absolutely amazing. And shout out to the teachers because every time I read, they just tell me, there's the chair. The kids know right where to go, what to do. They're so engaging and engaged when I'm with them. So thanks to everyone for making a great I Love to Read Month. And I will also, just in the spirit of reading, give a shout out to Deb Griffith, who continues to partner with us on the Read Across South St. Paul. And so fun to see the community getting back into the schools and reading with our kids. Last week was National Counselor Appreciation Week or Counselor Week. And so we wanted to just pause and give a shout out. I know they were celebrated within our buildings, but wanted to make sure I didn't miss that opportunity to thank them. They do so much, whether it's one-on-one support or in group settings, things like friendship groups. There's just so many different things they do. And then obviously helping them with academic needs and academic planning. So shout out to all of our amazing counselors. Oh, speaking of amazing people who need a shout out, this month is also School Board Appreciation Month. So I just want to, on behalf of our administrative team, all of our families and staff, just thank you for all you're doing as a school board. You heard Vice Chair Claflin talking about the thought that's going into how to make this board be high functioning. We had a board retreat where we talked about the role of governance for the school board and the management work that the administration does. And so I know I feel very lucky to be in a space like this where it's so collaborative and so supportive. And what a neat community where you're so accessible. So I just commend you all for your availability to the community. So can somebody give me a round of applause for our amazing school board? Thank you. Enough in the room. All right, some other highlights going on. We talked about African, Black History Month, but today is actually National African-American Parent Involvement Day. And so love being in a small district. I was able to hop to each one of our sites and see the things going on. And it's really centering around our African-American families and engaging them as we always talk about our parents being the first teacher of their kids. So if we want to meet our kids' needs, we really need to meet with our parents and know how things are going. And so all of our schools hosted events focused on black history, culture, and of course, our amazing students. And so I was able to pop by each one of the sites, a great presenters and the students being engaged. So just shout out to everyone who came. And I know others couldn't, maybe because they were working with, that does not measure their care or concern for their kids. So great day today for that. We talked about a little bit already. I mentioned our BPO leadership, but we also have our comunidad de Latinos Unidas, our CDLU, our Latino Student Group, and our BPO went to pack meals at Feed My Starving Children. And so they spent a significant amount of time, they were able to pack up sixty-two boxes, which is over thirteen thousand meals and will provide a daily meal for children across the world for thirty-seven kids for a daily meal. So that's a lot of meals packed and love to see that spirit of service and giving back. So shout out to the CDLU and our BPO as well as their advisors to make that happen. Other exciting news, we got some great activities and athletics things happening. So our Packers Girls Dance Team qualified for state and jazz competition. So that's happening on Friday, the sixteenth of this Friday at Target Center. So shout out to them for making it there. And we have a really thriving and growing girls wrestling program. And so I was talking to Coach Nyhard in the hall last week and he was really excited to share how well the kids were doing. And we have out of our girls, we have five individuals qualify for the girls state wrestling tournament. That happens on March second at the X. So congratulations to Zoe, Giselle, Vivian, Haley, and Ella. Really cool to see them getting in there and making a name for themselves in that. As always, we're trying to get out and try to get our kids some meaningful experiences. So this is really fun to just get in that large space here. So third graders from classes at Lincoln Center got to take a field trip to the US Bank Stadium. And they learned about the science, technology, engineering, and math or STEM side of football and just a great experience to get into that space. So thank you to the Twins for making that available to our students. I'm sorry, the Vikings, wrong team. And then a Lego League open house. We had a Capoja hosted an open house for families and staff to come and see students demonstrate what they've been learning within the Lego. And so for those who don't know, Lego League, it actually incorporates a few things. Obviously Lego are what they build with. But they do coding and robotics with that. And if they are in the full Lego competitions, they always have a project to solve. So my own children have participated in Lego and a great way to build team and problem solving. So excited to have the kids show off what they were doing there. I love when kids can do things that I'm not good at. And so congratulations to our Geography B kids down at Capoja. So they have a geography club. So twelve students from the club got to compete for the top three spots. And so they did rounds of questions related to a geography theme. So each theme they'd have some questions and then students were eliminated when they answered two questions incorrectly. So the final round is Jeopardy-style and students had to write their answers on the whiteboard. And we see that Cameron got first place, Jeremiah in second, and Sophia in third. And kudos and shout out for that. And I love that our staff are elevating that. We are notoriously notoriously bad as Americans about knowing where things are outside of maybe even South St. Paul. So I'd love that the kids know those things. And then just some dates to remember. We have President's Day coming up, so no school next Monday, one week from today. March seventh is a flex learning where the students are at home for pre-K through five, but our secondary will be in session. And then March eighth, no students for pre-K through twelve. And then spring break right around the door, or right around the corner here, March twenty-fifth to twenty-ninth. Some fun things happening at our site. So Capoja has a family movie night coming up on February fifteenth at six. The twentieth, the Chick-fil-A fundraiser from four to seven, always fun to just grab a quick bite and not have to do any work and support the school. And then the same thing at the Culver's Dine Out fundraiser on the twenty-seventh. And that's a fifth grade to help support the fifth grade farewell celebration. So they get ready to transition to middle school. And then Lincoln on the thirteenth, which will be tomorrow, they have the dine-out fundraiser at Chipotle. So again, if you want to support the schools and not have to cook, easy way to do it. Secondary, we have band and choir concerts coming up. So this week we have the band concert and then choir concert on the twenty-second. Athletics and activities, the dance team at State, we mentioned that, is on the sixteenth at two PM. And then the show choir Sweethearts Dinner is on February seventeenth. I went last year. It was a ton of fun. I cannot make it this year because we have two dear friends who have their fiftieth birthday, but I can definitely put a plug in to say it is a fun time and the kids, man, do they perform. So that'll be a great event there. For all the games and all the schedules, you can hop on our website and click away and find your favorite activity or sporting team to follow. But as always, our website is a great spot to find all of our meeting materials for our board or other things going on. And you can also follow us on all your favorite social media. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Up next, we have our consent items, which are financial claims, staffing, and personnel in nature have been presented in the board book that is available to the public and the board. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to pass our stat, our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. And we have no policy items up for review at this time. As we are just sort of in between a cycle of some policy review. For our business items, we've got a whole slate of items for tonight. And up first, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the FY twenty-four budget revisions. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And for discussion, I'm going to turn this over to Brady Hoffman.
Good evening. So before I use FY twenty-four budget revisions, so back in June, the school board adopted the budget for this year. At that time, we're going with the best information that we know with different assumptions with what the funding looks like from the state, what our enrollment looks like, how staffing is going to play out. So once we get through the year a little bit annually, the school board will revise the budget. So now that we have, you know, more information on those funding streams, what our enrollment's looking like, and just kind of how things ended that as of last year's audit, we're incorporating those revisions. So we did review this at the committee of the whole last month. I'll highlight some of the items in the budget document in the board packet. But some of the revenues that we updated were our federal entitlements. So we don't always know what those total, those actual federal allocations will be when we adopt the budget. Those come later in the summer. Also, it'll depend on our federal carryover. So some of these grants that we have from COVID and ESAR are multi-year grants. So the budget this year is partially dependent on how our spending ended last year. So we're incorporating those changes. The special education cross subsidy is an increase in funding that came through this past legislative session. So we were conservative in our estimates because until we see those calculations come out from MDE, we're going to err on the side of caution. We've updated some of our state aid estimates based on enrollment and some of those legislative pieces. On the expenditure side, we've also revised for updated staffing estimates. So we're budgeting based on anticipated staffing. And now that we have people in positions and what their salaries are and those benefits are, we incorporate those. We also had unemployment, that summer term unemployment cost come in this year. So we've incorporated the revenue and expense for those because this is our first experience with that. So overall, these revisions increased our revenues one point three million and they increased our expenses about seven hundred and fifty thousand. So we're improving our bottom line about five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars with that. So this is a good thing. It puts us in a better position as we look forward because this becomes kind of the baseline and the starting point as we project out into future years. Also in this budget packet is our fund balance summary that's then updated to incorporate these revisions. So when the budget was adopted, we were projecting an ending unassigned fund balance of thirteen point six seven percent. Board policy is a minimum of eight. This is an intentional growth in fund balance because this is the one year where we're doubling up on our remaining COVID funds. And then the levy dollars that that increase that we went out to the voters for to help replace that. So to try and avoid that fiscal cliff as much as possible that many other districts are experiencing right now. So once we, excuse me, incorporate these revisions, that ending unassigned fund balance is now fifteen point five three percent as opposed to thirteen point six seven. So it puts us in a better starting point. So as we're facing declining enrollment and still, even though the state came through with some pretty significant funding increases, there's still some funding structural imbalances in their budget. So there's still always that long-term uncertainty from the state. So we want to do our best to make sure we're positioning ourselves for stability in the long term to best manage all the programs and services that we provide. So this is the high-level overview of the budget revisions. I know I just covered a lot pretty quick. Questions?
Any questions or comments? Now, this is something that's been in front of the board a few times along the process, but we've had many opportunities to discuss. Any thoughts, questions?
I just want to thank you for always erring on the side of caution so that you're protecting our assets and the work that we do in our schools for our community. Thank you.
And I really appreciate your dedication and your follow-through and making things is understandable for some of us that are, you know, maybe have a little trouble with that. But anyway, just I want to thank you for the work that you've done, Brady.
Thank you.
Puts us in a much better place when kind of facing so many of the other growing concerns that exist inside of so many districts and their funding at this time. So. All right, with that, all in favor of passing the approval for the South St. Paul School Board 2024 budget revisions? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. Don't go far, Brady. Next, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the FY twenty-five Budget Guiding Change Document. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I return to Brady Hoffman, the time traveler who exists in many years of our budget, all at the same time.
Multiple hats. It's a lot of fun. So the guiding change document is kind of the overarching document that we work with internally as we're planning out and projecting out next year's budget and working through the different yeah, the way we're going to build the budget, right? We wanted to align to the direction of the board. So the guiding change document walks through kind of what's our current reality? What do we know about our state of the district today? And where are we trying to go based on what we know? And then what are we not, what's not acceptable to the board? So this is kind of that overarching framework we operate within. So we walked through this also back in January with the board. But I'll just kind of highlight a few of the pieces. So when we look at like where we are today, yes, the state did provide significant funding for FY twenty-four and beyond. However, those increases still don't keep pace with inflation. So yep, they took our general formula, the kind of the mainstream from the state, and they attach it to inflation, which is maybe two percent, give or take, two percent is what inflation is looking like. But our costs and our contracts and things like that have a tendency to rise quicker than that. So there's always a little bit of an imbalance. And then they've even talked about sustainability at the state level of that is uncertain, right? They've got a surplus now. In a few years, they know they're out of money and then they're deficit spending at the state level. So one way the state has a tendency to balance their budget is by how they adjust our payments and the funding that we receive. So just because they gave us the money this year doesn't mean it's always going to be there. So we want to be mindful of that. Enrollment is a big piece for us. We've been declining for the past several years. Last fiscal year was the first year where our open enrollment flipped. So we're no longer net gaining in open enrollment. We now have more of our residents opting out versus students opting into South St. Paul. And we do anticipate this decline to continue to happen mainly due to declining birth rates, right? So as we've had less births within our district, naturally, our kindergarten classes are smaller than our outgoing seniors. So we have that natural decline. We are eighty percent salaries and benefits. So when we put together our budget, it is predominantly our staff, right? That's the biggest piece of our budget. So we need to be aware and mindful of that. And then just from a timeline, the school board does need to adopt the budget by July 1st or June 30th so that we have a budget to operate under starting on July 1st. So that's where we are, some of the context and the reality. The results of what we're trying to achieve is a budget that strives to maintain a consistent fund balance as we're facing these declining enrollment and the funding uncertainties of the future. Always looking for efficient, effective uses of resources through ongoing evaluation of current services and programs. So we're always looking at what we're doing. Is this the best way we can do it? Is this the most efficient use of our resources? Developing programs and systems aligned to the academic strategic plan, the pathway to the Packer promise. So that's a piece that we're, you know, really starting to make sure we're investing in that right direction with that academic plan. Maintaining classified norms is another one of the results that the board has said. We want to maintain those norms that we've had as we go forward. So that's on the results. Unacceptable, you know, to not substantially reduce the arts and athletics and activities. So that's a continuation from the past as well. That's a priority of the board to maintain programming in those areas. So this is that overarching document. We'll have more updates throughout the spring as we talk about the budget and where it's trending and what that looks like. But this is kind of that first blush of here's the direction from the board so we can come back next month with more information to share. Any questions, comments?
Not at this time.
This is also a source of sort of ongoing discussion. You know, I appreciate our current financial picture for '24. But I think some of those realities are difficult things that is a district we constantly have to sort of wrestle with between that declining enrollment, state funding, the cross subsidies, that, you know, all of those pieces that still make some of our budgeting really challenging. But appreciate your efforts on that. With that, I am looking for a motion to approve. Oh, I already did the approval. Then all in favor of our FY '25 Budget Guiding Change Document, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. And up next, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the acceptance of Gifts Resolution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And Brady, still in place.
All right, we have a few donations we wanted to highlight this evening. We have a donation from Kathleen Hanslick for the wrestling program. We have a couple of donations from the Open Foundation for salaries for the boys hockey coaches as well as transportation for the wrestling program. The Southwest Lioness Lions have made a donation towards the ECFE programming. And then we also have the donation of a flute to our fifth grade band program.
Excellent.
Nice.
And that was from Sean and Kelly Deering.
Always an appreciation for our community's support for our schools, for our children, for the activities. It's a constant show of support. As it is a resolution, Lisa, will you please call the role?
Director W. Felton.
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lollaberry?
Yes.
T. Felton?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
And Cher Rush?
Yes.
That's seven years?
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Brady, for tonight. Up next, so many business items tonight. Looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the final field trip request for the Spanish class to travel to Costa Rica, March 23rd through the 30th of 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to put an add in. Almost 50 years ago, when I was in Spanish class, our Spanish class, we went to Spain. And even to this day, my classmates that attended with me and with all of our friends, we still talk about it and still to this day have many, many wonderful memories of that trip. So it's very proud for me to approve of these trips for our students to be able to go on.
Absolutely. These may, these are some lifelong memories that are made.
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries again. This is not the only trip though, because now I'm also looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the final field trip request for the French class to travel to France, March 20th through the 30th of 2024. Apparently, so many of our kids, just they're leaving, heading out to foreign travel. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And further discussion?
I'll just add, you know, this is kind of a formality at this point, but process-wise, for those who are tuning in, when we have a trip that's going to be overseas that does need board approval, they usually come, well, they always come a year ahead just to get the green light to move. Part of why we have this step in the process is just to make sure there's nothing going on in the political or otherwise, you know, global pandemics, those kinds of things that have happened. And so it's exciting to get to send these kids on these great, as Director Felton mentioned, you know, life-changing experiences. So just a little context on that.
Absolutely. Well, I was also really hoping that we get this across because Renata's in the room and may be going on one of these trips, so. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Looks like some trips are happening.
Had a wild trip.
Up next, we've got some board member reports. And I am going to turn the floor over to Renata first.
So Louise couldn't make it today. So you guys are stuck with me. So, um, so we met with Ochaki, PAC, the PAC meeting last week. And he actually gave us the update. We didn't give him any update, really. We just gave him feedback and complaints. So, um, so what we talked about that he brought up to us was the possible pathways that they're creating actually these coming years. So the first one, we're starting with the transportation and the trade. And you guys heard about that. It's with Tri District. And business and computer science, human services, health and medical careers, and post-secondary preparation. So all of these things are actually in preparing our students to have an opportunity to learn how to teach, how to be in the health field. And especially, they're open now to, I asked Ochaki, if they're open to IV students that are prior to this coming years. So we talked about, like, what are these classes are going to help our students? Like, what kind of things are going to be said and told to help them? So these are the new pathways that they're preparing. It's still in progress, so more to come to you guys. Next is student life. So one of the boys basketball players, Alonso Simmons, varsity, scores his 1,000 points. And it was very exciting. The Packer Girls Dance qualified for the state tournament and the jazz competition, as you guys heard. And then the Packer Girls Wrestling Team had five individuals qualify for the girls' state wrestling tournament. And congrats to Zoe, Giselle, Vivian, and Haley, and Ella George. And also congrats to the wrestlers Birch Told and Thomas Ochaki and Andrew Bonk for all their wrestling wins. So obviously, more activities. Basketball Girls Varsity, and obviously, you can see the rest of these activities on our SSP school website. And also, I forgot to mention that SSP and BPO will also be reading to our fellow elementary students Wednesday. Yeah, Wednesday. So.
Nice.
Yeah, any questions? Perfect.
Thank you so much, Renata.
Yeah.
All right. Next, I will turn to board members to provide committee updates for some of the work that they have been doing. I will start with Kim Huma.
Community Education will be meeting tomorrow at 4:15, so I will be at that meeting. But I do want to put in a plug this, last week, I had an opportunity to check out the new library building with Dr. Zambrino. And I just thought the passion that the library staff is bringing towards the excitement of their new building, being so close to our secondary building, is really exciting and inspiring. They are prepared to cooperate with us and our kids, and I just think it's awesome.
Fantastic. Wendy Felton?
Yes, as you know, I serve on the Education Foundation Board. And just as a reminder to the students, our seniors at the high school, that they have the opportunity to apply for scholarships that will be given out in the beginning of May. And just as a reminder, that the application is due this week. So we encourage you to go through the variety of scholarships that are available to our students and make sure you get it filled out and so that you can earn some money to help you off after you graduate. And then also, as you know, I do serve on the Senior Center Board of Directors. And just a couple of things that are coming up there. Coming up next week, on Thursday, the 22nd, is our community luncheon. They're calling it Super Bowl Snacks, which will be served from 11:30 until 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So we encourage members of our senior center to come for that luncheon. And also, another thing that's exciting and is available coming up, well, in May, it's Wednesday, May 1st, is our Spring Fashion Show, where we usually get approximately between about 75 people that we have space for at the Central Square. So we encourage you to sign up for that if you're interested. And there is a $20 fee that helps pay for our lunch, which is catered by the coop. So it's an excellent luncheon. It's a really fun event. So if you're thinking of coming, you are encouraged to get registered up. And I personally would just want to wish everyone Happy Valentine's Day, which is Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Felton?
The Open has not met yet. We canceled last month, so that's coming up later this month.
Excellent. And Claflin?
Well, I completely forgot what day it was when local issues met on that Fourth Wednesday of January. I thought we were only on Tuesday. So I missed that one. I now have a big bright alert on my phone for the Fourth Wednesday of February. And we'll be at that one for sure. I also attended the Senior Community Center Luncheon where staff made 100 potatoes. And at the end of it, there were only nine, or there were only three left. So 97 folks came through. It was really wonderful chatting with folks and learning some of the things that they appreciate about the Senior Center and having this philosophy of continuing education as part of our school district, that we are here to inspire curiosity for lifelong learning. It was really great to see them all enjoying their baked potatoes. So I look forward to the next one. And then I also had the privilege of receiving a bunch of artwork from Capoja Education students. And this is part of a PTA national contest for arts. And we had a lot of students send in submissions on a theme of what I'm hopeful because. And our top artists have their artwork now forwarded onto the state competition. And those artists are Ruby, Lucas, Felix, Avery, Genesis, Elizabeth, and Lila. So congratulations.
Excellent. Thank you. Nikki Lollaberry?
Oh. Well, I was going to update about the senior luncheon, but it's already been done. And yes, it was a fun event. There were three board members that were there. And a lot of visiting and a lot of listening to people there. And I, a big shout out and thank you to Linda and Jean Zender for their dedication and work and what they've done to raise the enrollment of people that attend the community or the Senior Center. And just the love and dedication that you feel from them. And you can feel it in the seniors when they talk about it, that this is like a second home for them. So this partnership with the school district and Central Square, we were all leery of it when it first we took over from the city. But it has turned into a really special and wonderful thing.
Monica Weber?
I have two different updates that I'm going to be giving. I am the district representative to intermediate district 917, which is a consortium that we belong to of nine different partner districts, all revolving around how we best serve our students who have special needs in a variety of ways. And at the meeting, they talked about staffing has been an incredibly challenging area for them. And they are getting some new staff members in from a program from overseas. So these students are all trained in a college overseas. And there are more opportunities for those jobs here in the U.S. So they have, I think they're starting with five, I believe, students. And they'll see how it works. So they're excited about that. It's something new and different. And yeah, they're just excited to begin that. They also had talked about, again, the budgets, some policy ideas. They had a closed session for contract negotiations. I believe it was for their paraprofessionals because they approved the teacher contracts already. So it's that time of year, keep going through contract negotiations. And if anyone has any other questions about that, feel free to send me an email. I'm also on the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. They had probably their biggest meeting of the year just recently, and that was their legislative preview. So happy opening day of session to those who celebrate. The legislature started today and they will go until mid-May. And then it's off to the races for who's going to be in the next legislature. So AMSD, there were lots of different legislators there. I lost count. I know Representative Rick Hanson from South St. Paul was there. And many, many, many other legislators were there. The priorities for AMSD going into legislative session are kind of some more policy questions around the READ Act and around the science of reading and what curriculums are permitted. And, you know, some policy cleanup around that. Obviously, funding, you know, again, they passed into the funding bill last year, but there'll be more probably supplemental requests. A little bit about bonding. And with bonding, that meant a little bit more about school safety and about how do we keep our buildings and all of our buildings safe for all of our students? Talked a bit about the education workforce shortage. There's workforce shortages in many different industries and education is definitely one of them. And what can the legislature do to help provide more incentives for more people to go into education? And the most interesting item, I thought, was about providing districts more local control over some of their programming. So during the pandemic, schools had more flexibility around e-learning, around different types of curriculum, and how can we do learning in this model or that model? And some districts found a lot of success in some of these new models. And then the legislature last year just sort of shut off the ingenuity spigot and said, no, you will now go back to kind of the way we used to do it, which maybe for statewide standards, from their perspective as a statewide body, makes sense. But AMSD is really advocating for some more local control and flexibility around some of those programs and ability. So that'll be an interesting topic going through the legislative session this year. And then, yeah, happy, you know, Valentine's Day and happy President's Day next week.
Excellent. Well, we had a full meeting tonight. There was a lot for us to manage our way through. Thank you, everyone. With no further items on our agenda, I am looking for a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 7:09.